I do that with my team all.
All right, thank you. It's 5:15. Let's call the council meeting order and do Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby is absent. Mayor Mongi?
Here. We're gonna flip A and B, so I'm gonna like ask for motion to accept the way it is now and then put it.
Should we adopt, uh, do we, is there adopting agenda quick?
Let's adopt the, we can, but we're gonna pull. I'd like to pull A and B because they're gonna flip.
Yep. Can we do that right after the consent agenda, if that's right?
So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Schwer, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got two items on the consent agenda. Item A is general claims of $1,550,643.07. Item B is HRA claims of $13,891.63. Looking for a motion on that.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, city business action items and recommendations. We're gonna flip A and B. Uh, we're gonna start off with the award contract for the 2024 crack sealing project. We have city engineer Morgan Dolly here to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this next item is a matter of housekeeping for contracting road maintenance improvements that were included in the 2024-2033 capital improvement plan in the 2024 budget, um, namely crack sealing activities. This is something that we do approximately every three years on roads that have been uh either maintained or are in a situation from a uh rating standpoint where applying some regular maintenance dollars into them will hopefully lengthen the life and prolong the time for uh before like something more significant or major like a millon overlay improvement is needed. Um, so simply crack sealing. Last time we did this was 2022, I believe. Uh, generally something that we do approximately every three years, give or take. Um, we did solicit quotes and um the two quotes were received. The low quote is Aztec Corporation, which coincidentally is the same contractor doing our pavement management project right now in different areas of the city. Uh, grand total quote of $71,838.16. That was below estimate and within budget. Um, staff is recommending a word of contracts by resolution, which is included in your packet here. There's certainly more information in the packet with respect to the quotes received. Happy to stand for any questions, uh, but uh simply asking for council's uh award of contract so that we can issue a notice of award to get the contractors started. We anticipate that the streets would be completed at some point before mid-October is the completion date within the contract. Um, and yeah, I'll stand for any questions council might have.
Thank you. Any questions, councilmembers?
No questions here.
I got nothing.
Okay. And all?
Yeah, quick question. Quick question. I'm just wondering if um there's any op, like if you see any um potential need for change of like the cost, if say the cost um changes, what is the voucher something? What is that called? Do you know what I mean?
With the pay voucher?
Yeah, so it's like when we, when we um have a project and then um the quote comes in differently, a change order.
Ah, I don't, yeah, sure. So, yeah, the question would be, do I, do we anticipate any change orders with this particular project? I don't. Uh, we tried to be conservative with our estimate of the number of pounds of sealing material that is used. Um, and uh there is some ability to monitor that as the project goes on. If they are pacing ahead, for example, and we think that they might uh exceed budgetary constraints, we'd probably just tell them to stop as opposed to coming to council with a change order to finish some small amount. Um, we did, as you can see from the map included in the packet, we do identify for the contractor kind of our first priority and then our second priority streets. If we did have to stop and leave a couple street segments out and those carry forward to two to three years from now, that has been discussed with Public Works as kind of a contingent uh occurrence that could happen. Uh, but we'd like to try to uh see if we can get them all done, and I think there's a good likelihood that we can do that. So um from a project management standpoint between Public Works and myself, we'll try to stay on top of that. Um, but bottom line, to answer your question, I don't anticipate any change orders here.
Great, thank you.
Um, I would like to add to that. It is our practice that if there are changes, that the change order does come back to the city council for approval, and Morgan has done an excellent job of that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. If nothing else, can I get a motion to adopt the, this sealing project?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Wong?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, against? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is uh community center RFP discussion. I'd like to put out maybe a suggestion. So the last time that we met, there was a request for a little more time to go over the contract to make sure that all the things were included that we would want in that RFP. If there's anything you want to review tonight, we certainly do that, or we can just allot maybe a couple weeks or some time to review, and then we could get any feedback from council. We could put it in the RFP and then bring the RFP back to you as a final product at the next council meeting for you guys to vote upon if you so choose.
Um, I am ready to, I've, I've made a list of some. One weeks slash revisions to, to go through on my end. I don't know if the council has done the same. Um, I don't want to continue to delay the process. There's been a lot of, we've, we've finally got to a point now I want to keep the momentum going, so um, I mean, I didn't know it was on the agenda tonight, so I didn't know if we were actually, it was his discussion, so. So we're not gonna vote on anything, right? We're just gonna go through.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure you guys have enough time to go through it, point out anything you might want addressed.
I do. I figured we're gonna do it in a, in a workshop, but we didn't have a workshop tonight, so do we want to just go through it now?
I haven't had, I would like to go through it myself and then provide those.
Just submit them after you've gone through it and, okay. Do you have a preference, Lisa?
Um, I think I have most of my edits now if, if people want them. Um, otherwise, yeah, um, you know, let's.
Would you be okay with submitting them and then we make those changes and bring them back to you? Um, we'll give them to you ahead of time so you have time to review, and then you can vote to move it forward to um put out the RFP?
For me, open discussion is better so that we can be in alignment with what our tweaks and changes are.
Sure, sure.
And I may have something that differs from Councilmember Wong.
Indeed, okay.
So, to me, open dialogue is better than submitting.
Yep.
Can you figure it out?
Yep.
So, um, that's my, that's just my opinion.
Please.
If you'd like to discuss it, go ahead and move forward. I'm fine with it.
I'll let you lead there, sir.
Go ahead.
Do you want to lead us off?
Um, sure. I didn't have a ton, um, and I recognize that a lot of this is boilerplate, especially when you get to the back half of the deck, half the deck. Um, so I spent the majority of the time reading some of the upfront stuff, and I had questions, and I don't know where they came from or what the intent was, so it's more for me clarification than, than anything else. So I'm looking at the, at the owner's statement. Um, first thing that pops out to me is paragraph four, where it references, "All these efforts, including offering a variety of memberships and one-time use options, may be done with little or no charge to general situation of the community center. Services of the community center are considered nonessential and are not required services the city must provide." Uh, question where that statement came from, um, and it would be my recommendation that entire paragraph be stricken. Anybody wanna?
And we have no problem with that?
I'm perfectly comfortable with any changes that are made to it.
Yeah.
So I mean, no, that's fine. I, I could, to be honest with you, it's been such a long time, I can't even remember where I got this stuff from. And I, and I know there were reasons stuff was put in here. I just don't know what they were. So if it's something else tied to it, I'm perfectly fine with, with the way it sits.
Can you read that paragraph again if you don't mind, please?
Um, do you not have document? Uh, all these efforts, it's, so it's paragraph four, so it comes in a communication line. "All these efforts, including offering a variety of memberships and one-time use options, have done little to change the general situation of the community center use. Services at the community center are considered nonessential and not required services that the city must provide." So again, I'm looking for clarification as to who, why it's there. I don't know if moving forward, we're looking, I, I, I mean, it's history. No, I'm, I'm aware of that. That's, that's why, that's why I'm asking the questions.
Any modification on this that you see fit? We have no problem making.
Pulled up the, I'm sorry, I pulled up the document, so if you wanna tell me what, so I'll strike it right now. It would be page two of the document or page 232 out of uh last meetings. Guess it would have actually been in our um committee in the uh.
Workshop?
Uh, no, it wasn't the workshop. I think it was in the, in the regular meeting.
Okay.
It begins with all of these efforts.
Yep.
Strike that. Um, next paragraph down, um, "The community center will also provide extra recreational and gathering space." I don't know what extra recreational means. And again, I understand where it came from, and I'm. So I just, I would strike extra.
Well, I mean, it could be a yoga room. It could be, you know.
Right.
Right.
So. Um, next page is page three, required um, uh, request for proposal, um, submitting proposal. A lot of, a lot of my changes here are just based on dates, just because we're not 100% sure when, I mean, I'm hoping that we can have this thing voted and proved on at the, at the only August meeting that we have. Um, so I, I, I did circle the bunch of the dates on here. The only thing I wanted to call out, um, knowing that when this goes out, we won't probably see it by August 16th because it might not be out by then. Um, because we don't.
We don't have it until the 20th.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. We've got some dates in here. Um, the area that I focused on most was the proposed timetable. Um, submission proposals by August 16th. We know that's not gonna happen if we don't vote tonight. Um, uh, 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 uh. Approval for, from city council, September 6th. I would like to move that up to uh the end of August.
August 20th.
Uh, and final projection project completion date, December 17th. Uh, I would like to see that either moved to our last meeting in November, which is the 19th, or the first meeting in December, which is December 3rd. They can come back and say no, but I just wanted to, to put some dates on there. I would like to um bring this to a conclusion um before the end of the calendar year. Um, next one, projection overview starts on the bottom of that page and uh the carries forward. It just, um, well, I don't know who team is. I'm assuming that's whoever the contractor is.
Right.
Keep saying team. I don't know who that is. I don't know. And it talks about the multiple disciplinary team um with recreation facility design and construction plan experience. Is that too limited? I mean, I just suggest the word community center. It's more vague.
True.
Again, just my, my recommendations. Then as I read through the next set of um bullet points, um, the first bullet point under flexible multicultural space, I, I just threw down what else? Is there other, you know, it talks about um, you know, offering farmers or craft markets, education programs, seasonal cultural events, celebration and social gathering. I'm just wondering if we wanted to expand that, and I guess, Lisa, I look to you more for guidance on that piece of it than, than what I would have. The next paragraph talks about um foster positive socialization and offer recreational space. Um, again, I don't, I would caution recreational because it's more than a recreational facility. So if we can tweak that to meeting or community or something along those lines.
You taking that as only meaning recreational space?
Yeah.
Okay.
A safe place for youth to foster positive social and offer recreational space for sports and um youth targeted activities.
Okay.
So, or just space for sports and youth, and just strik, strike that through. I also had as a comment in through these sections, um, and I can't remember where it came from, a safe community place, a demonstration hub to showcase the city's commitment to green. Um, I wrote in the margin here, youth programs, um, third-party involvement in managing. Um, and I didn't know what else to call it, but there may be space for, you know, whether it be the theater group or whatever, somebody might want to rent space. So I wanted that to be part of the scope, but I didn't know where to put it.
We'll find a place for it.
You're quite the guy.
We, we're gonna.
Oh, but look, there's more. Um, partnership development, I am on, Dan, page five. Under partnership development. Why do I have, please explain what this means. "The team must have experience in development of partnership relationships and can be associated with community centers and types of partnership program." I don't know what it meant. I, it looks okay, I just didn't know exactly what it meant. Moving down under overall scope of service, uh, parag, uh, subpoint one subsection C, "Review existing facility and assessments and master plan, and master plan." Do we have a master plan? Is that um just existing facilities and develop?
Yeah, it's pretty wide open as multicultural centers.
Yeah. Subpoint number two, under demographics and market analysis. Point B, "Complete a comprehensive market analysis, including rates, attendee numbers, and services offered." I'm just concerned, is that limiting the scope to making it back to being a workout facility? I didn't, I, again, looking for clarification as to the, to the bullet point. The market, I, I've got no idea. "Complete a comprehensive market analysis, including rates, attendee numbers."
And services offered, I mean, it's pretty wide open, the services offered, isn't it?
Yeah. So do we need?
Do you want to put some examples in there, or what are you thinking?
Or take out some of the other words? Are we looking to charge the usage fees for residents to, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I, again, it's vague, I don't know.
With some of the discussions that were different entities were looking at uh just court time for different volleyball things, I guess it would kind of fall on that if that was what we did with it?
Okay. I, again, just looking for clarification as to what it meant. Uh, under programming, number four, section C, "Develop operating structure and parameters." And then I also, somewhere in here, I wanted to include a third party, because we have had conversation in the past with um third parties who've been willing to take over management of the facilities.
Mm-hmm.
And I would like them to look for those as well. So somewhere in here, I don't know where, I just put it in here for.
I'll get a copy of that from you.
You can have it. Site analysis and concept solution, um, under, that's number five, subnote B, um, "Must consider moder, modifications." I just stricken the word must, "Consider mod, modifications to existing facilities." Oh, and A, "Identify all possible sites, analyze each, um, and recommend a site preference." We only have one site.
Hmm.
So I'm thinking A should probably be polled completely. And, and, and perfectly good with that, but here's the other flip side to it. Um, there's been comments by city council that maybe it isn't the best location and, and site because of parking and so forth. So what this would do would, would be to open it up, and at the end of the day, you would end up having to get legislation to change, um, you know, instead of being specific to that site. It could be a different site location. So this would open up that opportunity and give you more informed information um in making your final decision. But if you want to be a site-specific and that's all, we certainly can have it that way. Well, I guess I would open this up to um the group. It's of my understanding from conversation with DEED that this funding is for this specific location and cannot be utilized anyplace else. Correct, without legislation approving it. So you could take it back and have them, and I, I would find the odds being pretty high that they would turn around and approve whatever you decided that you wanted to do with it, as long as it was still in line with that multicultural. Okay. Programming component to it, but. All right. So then the other piece is B, I just would recommend pulling the must out of. I mean, just consider it an adjective to describe.
Mm-hmm.
I am on page six. Uh, subs, I'm on the same number. Uh, number six for operational analysis. Sets, um, subnote C, "Develop reports addressing each attendee's estimates, fees/rate structure, source income." Just, again, rates, rates, rates and fee structure, we don't really know what it's gonna be, and I, my mind just goes back to what it was. I'm, I'm fine with leaving it in, but that's, you know, where my head goes. Project capital cost estimate, D, E, and F. I don't know what equipment costs are, soft costs, I don't know what an FFE cost is. Um, total project cost estimate, I get that, but I didn't know what D and E meant. I don't know if that means buying equipment to put in a gym. I, I, it's vague.
Which we hadn't intended on doing.
Correct. That was why I was, I would, and I don't know what an FFE cost is. FFE is, is furniture fixtures and equipment? You're good. I'm not good at three-letter acronyms. I know a lot about facilities. I appreciate that, sir. Um, I, I mean, I would, I would recommend striking it from both, but if we want to keep it in there, I guess that's, it's up to the general consensus. Is there any intention whatsoever to, at some point in time, to add, you know, furniture fixtures and equipment? And would it be beneficial just to kind of get that idea of, you know, what they would be looking at?
I think it would be beneficial to keep it in there, from my opinion.
You know?
Okay.
I mean, again, at the end of the day, you don't have to do it. At least it's information that you would end up receiving back.
And then like if there are architectural drawings, that can help with some of that vision as well.
Um, under, again, page six, number nine, final report, um, section C, uh, presentation to be reported to staff with a one and city council with a one. Is that the headcount? They would only be presented to? No, it just means one presentation to staff, one presentation to city council. Thank you. Um, and it says may be done virtual. I guess I would strike that out. I would, at least from a council standpoint, I don't want it. Good.
Yeah.
Oh, look, sorry, guys, there's more. Page seven, "Brief description of each section as follows. I am on section five schedule." That goes back to the earlier comments that I had stated about um wanting to have this presented either the last meeting of, last council meeting in November or the first council meeting in December. Insurance certificate, number eight. There's a whole bunch of stuff about presents this and presents that and determining a score. Is that how we do things? Is that normal? I'd never read it, I'd never read a contract this close, so I'd never. The proper way to do a, an RFP is that you're upfront.
Okay.
And you tell how the criteria, how you're gonna evaluate it, your point score, um, and it, you know, some will argue it should be both the, the written rating and then also if you shortlist and you do interview, how did you score those and combine everything together? To me, how I've got it here is that I look at it as a two-stage approach. You evaluate it on scoring on the written, you shortlist, you do an interview, and those, there, not everybody will have the same score. There's a different score and how, how did you come up? And part of it is, is it's transparency, and in case any one of the other uh proposers challenge it, you've got documentation to do it, and actually, it's by statute, too. That's always a killer. Right. I just did never, I, I'm sure it's been in other contracts, I may just have never seen it. We always just kind of focus on cost. So, thank you. With that, I'm done.
All right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate your time on that.
Are you ready for me?
I'm gonna be honest, I'm gonna have to watch this thing over because I missed like half of it, but yes, give it a shot.
So I'm on page two in the owner's statement, the second to last paragraph, um, in which it refers to um the funding we received. Um, if we could also add in um the federal component, too, just so they know the parameters around what funding is available, too?
Um, the copy I have, because there was a comment on the board, it has, "The city is the recipient of 4.5 million in state funding and 850,000 in federal funding for facility improvements for its community center building at 2,300 North St. Paul Drive."
This must be an old one.
That must have been the very first one, not the second one that was brought to city council.
Must be. Well, glad it's in there now.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, um, let's see. Yeah, I, I want some clarification on the intention. Is it intended to be multipurpose, which I think is part of the goal? Um, or is it, um, are we naming it multicultural because that's within our, um, within the le, like the parameters of our grant? Does that make sense?
I just followed the name that was in the grant from the state of Minnesota.
Yeah.
It was multipurpose or?
Multicultural. Was it multipurpose as well in that?
I, I think I've got it, it's quoted exactly.
I think I've got it, it's quoted exactly the way it was in the document, but I'll do a double check.
I apologize, because I think I have an older version, too, if that's already in And I want to just clarify, in page three, to propose an implementation plan that's consistent with, like, their findings as well? In that top paragraph.
I'm sorry, can you, one more time, please?
I think part of, some of that information would be beneficial if we included to propose an implementation plan that's consistent with their findings.
So, you would like the consultant to develop an implementation plan based upon their findings?
That that be a component, that it's practical, like, we can see that it's practical based off their feasibility, and what that would look like. And then, on page four, where it says, about halfway down the page, where it starts the feasibility study shall, et cetera, et cetera, I think it would be helpful for us to add in the, like, the operational component of it, because that is very much one of our biggest barriers to feasibility, so just really honing in on the operations component. And on page five, at the very top, with the partnership development, I'd be, I'd prefer a team that also knows how to do community engagement as well. So, I would put community engagement and partnership development. As for the scope of services, in that first item, project overview, I would also put in, where it says project review, identify constraints and parameters, it also says, you know, identify issues, concerns, and objectives for the project. I would also add in, like, the strengths, opportunities, and what assets it brings.
Would that really be included in item number one? Because item number one is really the overview and existing information, and so, we really don't know that information, it's kind of an outcome of the feasibility study, of what opportunities are there. So, I mean, I can see it being further down someplace, but this is really the reviewing of what you have today is kind of their starting point?
Oh, yeah, I was, yeah, I think there's been some community engagement done beforehand, so I was kind of, like, including maybe some of that data in that item.
And I guess in certain ways, doesn't that fall underneath D, and review existing data from user groups?
Sorry?
Doesn't that fall underneath the category of 1D, where it says review existing data from user groups?
Yeah, that could fit in there.
Because, I mean, we would give them whatever information that we, you know, have to date.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure all of them are users, or have been users, but we have some of that community engagement that was done prior. So, it's a little bit more broad, I think, than just the users themselves. As for number, perhaps number two, I would also include, kind of, collect and compile existing impact reports to include in the analysis.
Could you restate that one more time?
Do you collect and compile existing impact reports to include in the analysis?
Okay.
And then, as for community engagement, I think to ensure community engagement reflects, like, the community itself, so that trying to meet parity when they're out in community, so, including youth, different people from different backgrounds, because if it's going to be community-wide, just making sure that different voices are at the table. So, definitely including, like, youth and elders in that.
So, on both B and C, my suggestion would be to add something in there that it talks about, that it's a representation of the community?
Yeah, if, yeah, just to make sure that it's reflective of the community. I would probably also suggest that they reissue some sort of RFI to gather additional information from interested partners, and to follow up on those that inquired but haven't filled one out. And then, in programming, I would just probably remove the word banquet. I don't see, great, thank you. As for the operational analysis, if we could also include different models and strategies and best practices to achieve operations, so, just taking a look at the landscape of other community centers and analyzing how their operations are successful for them. For item seven, I would like to see even a draft of what a capital improvement plan And then, for funding analysis, be interested to see maybe what the impact is, what the economic impact is for our business environment, or also what the, like, trade-offs are for what it is for humans, too, people, if that makes sense?
So, where are you at here on this one?
I'm on funding analysis.
And in the funding analysis, you would like to have what?
So, item D, I see, identify the potential economic impact of the project on the community. So, I think just kind of clarifying that that includes, like, the impact on residents as well. And that's all I have at the moment, thank you.
I would have one ask, sorry I was late. In the final report, do you think, do you all think it would be fair to ask for the concepts presented to us? What variances from the city those concepts would need, if they do need a variance? You know, if one of the concept is, and I'm just picking stuff off the wall, a 300-seat auditorium, well, that would create a variance from the city for a parking, and I'd like to know that in the plan. So, if there are submitted concepts to us would require a variance from the city, when we're now analyzing it, I think that would be fair for us to know.
On page seven, where it says propose project team and experience, it says on item B, describe relevant experience and provide information on at least three reference projects completed in the six years. I would probably just remove six years, if it already isn't on your version.
Lisa, I apologize, I thought you were done.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I had something just popped up.
Okay.
My apologies.
No, I just wanted to make sure I didn't interrupt you, that was not my intent.
I'm sorry I interrupted you.
No, no, I just had the one thing.
Did you get that one, Dan?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Do we also, for the RFP, go into what the, with the grant and things like that, the length of it, and different things like that? Is that something that is covered in the RFP? As far as how long of a commitment we have, or anything like that, if they're looking at partnering with us?
We can, we can get some wording in there, have to take a look at it.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Could you hear?
If they're looking at partnering with us, as far, that's what we're looking at, people to partner with us, to show how long of a, what the entails of our grants and what specifications they are, so they understand that, you know, we're looking for a long-term.
Like, an anchor partner?
Correct, because we're, you know, what we're on the hook for, we're looking for a partner as far as that.
Is that all we've got, Framswood?
Got some on this side, some's over there, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good conversation. Next item up is the 2025 budget discussion for levy budgets, and I'll turn that over to Dan to start us off.
You're going to have to wait, I'm still typing, you ever see me type?
It's probably better than me.
All right, first of all, thank you very much, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're going to discuss the 2025 budget. We're going to be focusing on the levy budgets, and we'll be focusing on the levy budgets through September, because in September, we need to certify our maximum levy, and so, it's very important that we get through the levy portion to it. Just to kind of give you kind of an overview on enterprise funds, the only enterprise fund that we're intending or looking at seeking a rate increase would be the surface water, and that's just because it's a very small fund, and with all of the street projects, that there's going to be a need to increase that rate. We're looking at about a 4.5 percent. All other enterprise funds would not have a rate change whatsoever. So, focusing on our levy budget, tonight, we'll just do a quick look at, to kind of remind the city council of what budgets that they approve, look at the city council priorities that were set, and then look at the proposed levy, proposed general fund budget, proposed HRA and EDA levies, and then kind of look at the budget calendar, which is going to show that we're going to need two additional special meetings to get through all of our department heads, which we will begin tonight with department heads. We have our fire chief, Jason Mallinger, who will do the fire, and if time permits, I will cover just four quick, smaller general fund departments. So, city council approves the general fund budget, HRA budget, EDA, and then the proprietary funds, which are your enterprise funds and your internal service funds, and then other permanent funds that exist. Your enterprise funds consist of six, water, wastewater, electric, surface water, solid waste, and fiber optic. Internal service funds are the information technology, insurance, equipment, city mechanic, and building maintenance. And then the other budgets are the community center fund, community event fund, fire relief fund, park fund, and street maintenance fund. And then the other budgets are the community center fund, community event fund, fire relief fund, park fund, and street maintenance fund. The highest priorities that were established for 2024, you can see there was 11 of them. One of them, I'll just point on there is number six to keep taxes affordable because that truly does relate to setting a levy for the residents of the city of North St. Paul. Here's the good news or bad news. All of the department heads have submitted their budget requests. They have met with city manager Brian Frandl and myself. We have gone through and challenged them, tweaked them. And this is where we're at, and I'll kind of explain varying components within the proposed levy. There's also opportunities for city council to make reductions, and I'll show you some of the suggested reductions that could be made. But right now, we're looking at a overall, what I call, city levy of a 9.62 HRA. Is a big increase. Overall, HRA, EDA, city would be a 9.88% levy increase. But don't get too far yet. Well, we've got to go through the different components to it. The changes for the city for 2025, the bigger drivers were total personnel costs have increased 326,000 or 4.6%. What you'll see in like the police department is you'll see a higher cost of personal cost. But you also have to remember that on the revenue side, there's $167,000 revenue in other grants. And that's related to the officer that we have underneath agreement with the BCA. So the true impact of the levy increase on our total personnel cost is 4.6%. This does include a cost of living. I am not able to share what the cost of living is that I have in the budget because we're in the, you know, all of our union contracts are up and they're in negotiation, so I can't tell that. That would have to be something that would have to be done in an executive session. If you look at our supplies, contractual services, and capital, it's a modest 1% levy increase. For all of our departments in the general fund, it's only increasing $71,000. We have a reduction in our transfers that come, that we transfer out of the general fund of $69,000. And I have another slide here that'll show you the transfers in and kind of give you a big reason to why there is a reduction in that. And it's mainly due to, if you remember last year, that we parked $124,000 for health insurance. And then we transferred it to the insurance fund. Well, we won't be doing that this year. And then there's a reduction in revenue that'll be transferred into the general fund of approximately $65,000. And that's related, and there I have another spreadsheet that'll go in a little bit more detail. But that's part of how we fix, or how we planned our street maintenance. Our street maintenance impacts three enterprise funds, and they should be getting a reduction too. So it'll show that calculation of how we're doing that reduction piece to it. All other revenue, there was a reduction of $68,000. A lot of it has to relate to billing permits because we get a percentage of that. If they go higher than what we have estimated, then we'll get higher on the revenue side to it. But we're taking it based upon what we're seeing this current year and what we've seen in the past year. All of those items, you know, show, you know, a levy increase of 6.5%, which isn't too bad. You know, when you're looking at that 9.9 figure, 6.5 isn't bad for, for, for and mainly it's driven by the cost of, cost of living increase that's, that's in this budget. The other components to it that, that, you know, that increase it are related to infrastructure. And you'll see that streets, what we have in the budget right now, last year, this year, what we approved last year for this year, we had a 2% levy increase. Based upon the information that was provided by Morgan at our last city council meeting. And he showed if we were to move that rating index upwards. I took his numbers, put it into our plan, which I'll show you in a second. It would require us to increase it from 2% to 3.5%. So this budget has that 3.5% in there. Again, city council has, you know, the ultimate decision. You can reduce that from, you know, and leave it and move it back down to that 2%. Again, there's a lot more discussion that'll need to take place for city council to make that informed decision. And we'll be having Morgan come with more information pitchers and so forth. If you remember, we have a 1% increase split 0.45 for buildings, which is included up in the upper part in the transfers and then parks. So for streets and parks, because they are not internal service funds, we can have the levy go directly into their budgets for the building because it is an internal service fund. It has to go into the general fund and then be transferred into the building maintenance account. If you add up all of those items, it'll show you the 9.6% increase for the city. And then again, it's the increase in the HRA that brings it up to that 9.88%. Want to kind of show you what the transfers to the general fund in this current year. We transfer $820,000. With this change underneath our plan, the transfers would be $65,000 less. And you can see the three funds that are impacted through street maintenance projects. Transfers from the general fund that go out to other funds. You can see the building maintenance fund gets transferred out. That's that 0.45% of the levy. The insurance fund was, you know, one time we parked it in 2024. We're not transferring anything out in 2025. Right now, where community center budget is set, where we're at with operational costs right now, where we're at with the fund balance, we will end up needing to transfer $20,000 next year into the community center fund. So the fund balance doesn't go negative. It could be higher. We'll get into that when we we go into the community center fund pieces. And then traditionally, we have the transfer for the fire relief fund. Basically, it is the large component of that, which makes up over 90% of it, is what we get for state fire aid. And it's transferred over to the fire relief association, or fire relief fund, gets paid to the fire relief association. And then the city makes a small contribution. It goes up in 2025 to $94,500. That was, there was a resolution that increased the fire relief, I guess pension part to it, and this is the commitment that the city council had agreed to fund in 2025. And then there's also agreement, I think, for 2026 also. So that shows you where the transfers to and from in the general fund to give you a little bit more information. Debt, debt levy. And in 2025, we're going to see a significant decrease in our debt levy because we have the refund, we have the bonds that were issued for this city public works facility that will be paid off at the end of the, this year, actually in February of 2025, but levied in 2024. Part of, again, and I'll be showing it here in the next slide, part of our street maintenance plan to be able to fund everything at that 2% and then being proposed at a 3.5% was to keep our levy, our debt levy at that 1.4 million dollars. Any excess of it would then be moved into the levy and then moved into street maintenance. And I'll show you that coming up right here. But these are the debt payments that are general obligation that come from the general fund. Obviously, the city has other debt, but those are paid through revenue bonds, and they're coming from our enterprise funds. This is only, we're focusing on the general, uh, general fund. And this is the street infrastructure plan. As you can see, it has the expenses. And the plan was to keep, you know, when it was originally set up, as you can see, the funding part to it, to keep that debt the same at that 1.4. Obviously, debt is going to go up and down. The differences of that are captured within that maintenance. It either goes, you either increase it for the street maintenance or you decrease it once it goes above that 1.4 million dollars. There's, on the expense side, so you'll see the actual debt based upon the plan that Morgan had shared with us at last city council. There's a reduction in utility transfers. And again, it's based, it's calculated based upon 20% of the cost for those three utilities that are impacted on a street maintenance project. Then it has the street maintenance component to it, which is, you know, one of the items is what Morgan brought up today. Seal coating, striping, and so forth. Those are just maintenance. And then there's the pavement rehabilitation that began, that was introduced last year, that is going to be starting this upcoming year. This, this year, right now. And so that, this is what Morgan had shared with you, the exact numbers. And then the funding of all of this. And you can see that to be able to fund this over the 10 years, right now, at the end of, in our financial statement, at the end of 2023, we had $1.9 million in the street maintenance fund. This plan at the end of fiscal year 2034 brings our balance down to just a little over a million dollars. And so it's showing that these are all your funding sources. This is what you would need. You would need that 3.5% levy increase to be able to fund what Morgan had said without ever getting a year that would go negative and you couldn't afford to be able to do the plan. So, and in the budget, the 3.5 is incorporated in there. Again, city council has a decision not to do that, and we can go back, you know, to the pavement rehabilitation plan that, again, that we had last year, which was the option just above the very last one that Morgan had, had shown. And so, you know, we don't need, you wouldn't need to make the decision to increase that levy, that additional one and a half percent. So now to give you a picture. And it hasn't changed a great deal from year to year. And you can see that on our revenue by category, we have a huge reliance on property taxes, 58% and 20% on intergovernmental. So 78% of our revenue comes from those two sources. Kind of a scary, heavy reliance. And that's kind of a dilemma that the city is in. Expenditures by category, again, if we look at it by category component to it, personnel, again, is the huge driving component to it. It's 65% of our budget. And then contractual services is 27%. That's our real big driving factor. Again, it's pretty much the same year after year. And then if we just were to look at those in a graph form by department, we're seeing that police is 44%. Fire is approximately 15. So you combine those two, and we're looking at about 59, 60% of our budget is in public safety. That isn't out of the norm of what you see in other, you know, governments. But those are, those are your big drivers that are in your budget. These are all the numbers that back up the graphs. And, and again, and attached to your packet today is all of the line items in the general fund. And when department heads speak, we'll take a look at each and every one of those, those budgets. You can ask any question on any line item or, or anything that you so desire on those components to it. For the HRA and the EDA, you know, right now, it's built with a, a proposal to levy $50,000 to the HRA currently for this year. It's $11,000. The year before, we dropped it down to zero. To be able to offset the increase on the city side to bring on four FTEs to get our complement back up. The suggestion here is that we start moving back up in the other direction. Again, that's totally up to city council. If you don't have the desire to do that, we still have fund balance. And, and right now, the program for, for the HRA is really more focused on that student-built house. But it's not making as much as it was at one point in time. There is a change, if you remember, in the past legislation where there was an increase of a quarter percent in the sales tax that went to affordable housing. We have been the recipient of our first half of housing or money for affordable housing in the $242,000. So on an annual basis, it'll be $84,000. There are a lot of restrictions to that, and there's a certain, what it can be used for and what it can't be used for. And we'll, we'll end up having to have a specific workshop just on that and start to develop a program to be utilizing that. In addition, beginning in 2025, we'll end up having to do specific reporting on our usage of that fund. So depending on how the HRA plays out, there may not be that huge need at this point in time to increase this, that $39,000. And so that could be a very viable savings in the overall levy. For the EDA, they're totally content in keeping it and leaving it remaining the same. Levy that they, that they were at, it's, we levy $200,000. And so there's no increase. It would be the same as it was in 2024, and it's been the same for, it has been for, for a few years now. So they were very comfortable. There is a change that we made with the EDA budget part to it, and, and I totally agree with their request. And so city manager Frandl and myself met with the EDA. We talked to them. And they were looking at the community development director's position was underneath a prior city manager to get that position approved. They had funded 50% of the position out of the Economic Development Authority. That's way too high. So I believe we've cut it this year into 25, down to 25%, which then means there's a part that impacts the general fund. But I think it's much more reasonable and being at that than where it was at before. Kind of give you a high level of the, of the budget calendar, and then I'm going to go into a little bit more of a detail onto it. And, you know, by our, you know, our, our last meeting that we have in September, city council needs to certify our maximum levy. What that means is that we can't go up any higher than that, but we certainly, through deliberation, you know, in the months to come, we can go down. We can reduce that levy, you know, through a final. And then there's a required public hearing for truth and taxation that we will have in our first meeting in December. And in our second meeting in December, city council will approve all the budgets, the capital improvement plan and so forth. So, because everything needs to be submitted to Ramsey County by the end of the year. Got a lot of detail. You don't have this in your PowerPoint. I've added things in the, in the PowerPoint. I can't stop thinking. So we've broken down to each one of the departments, who's going to present, when we're going to present. And at the end of the day, to get through, through September, we're suggesting, and I, and I think Jenny's already sent, sent out an email to look for some dates for a special here in later part of August. And then I think that, based on the calendar, should be good enough to get us through this September. We'll have seen every one of the departments. We'll even give an opportunity on the September 3rd meeting to finish up any budgets in the general fund or levy fund components to it. And give the city council an opportunity to give us their final direction on that maximum levy, which then we'll make those changes and bring it back for the final vote on September 17th. And then we would need another special sometime in November because we'll miss the 5th due to the election. So we'll need somewhere else in, in November. Probably that following week would be ideal. And then again, we'll give an opportunity for city council to give discussion and direction on all of the other budgets and the levies as we get prepared for truth and taxation and then wrap up the final, in the last meeting in December, December 17th for the final approval. Kind of want to just plant some food for thought. And that is, we're sitting at a 9.88% levy. Last year, we saw, we, we came up with that 0.55% levy increase for the parks. There's a number of studies that, that were supposed to be on this way, but we've had some changing in, in staff that probably won't occur till next year, or at least the final reports. But I think it's clearly going to be an indication that we don't have enough funds to be able to, to take care of those things for the park. So this is just an item. Again, I'm just throwing ideas out there. And again, final decision is yours. But if we were to do a 1% levy increase for the parks and a 1% levy increase for the buildings. Again, until we get those final reports, I'm not comfortable in putting anything into a financial plan and sharing that with you. And again, we're getting closer, at least for the facility assessment component to that. But this would just be kind of a placeholder. Now, we're going in the wrong direction. I know I heard, I'll say that. No, you just went up to 11.88. Well, let's reduce it a little bit. And so I, I have a, an idea of reducing it or levy 3.4%. And that would be that we would take 50, we would transfer 50% of the investment income and 100% of the penalty charges from the electric fund to the general fund. Penalties, as you recall, were sunsetted during the COVID period. They were brought back at the beginning of last year. I think we, in the 2023, the calculation is based off of 2023. I think in 2023, we had, I think about $135,000, $140,000 worth of revenue in our penalties. We're on track to do the same this year. And then our investment income, we're on track again to, to do pretty much the same as we did last year. So it's a pretty safe bet to transfer the 249. Those items are not incorporated into our rate calculations, even going back as far as when Ellers and Associates did a rate study. And so in certain ways, they're attributed to the electric fund, but in certain ways, it, it's an opportunity for the city to, to utilize that to transfer. Part of the reason why I'm suggesting this methodology is because if you remember earlier, there's about this, almost the same amount that was a reduction overall in our debt. And so this will not have an overall impact. And so the next year, all of a sudden, we got to raise it 3.4% to cover this. And so they kind of offset one another, but it gives us an opportunity to reduce where we're at with the levy for 2025. And then, and I know that you have not reviewed the CIP, but there's two items in the CIP that get funded from the general fund. One has been something that's been historic and that is the Emerald Ashbore program, part of the forestry, urban forestry budget. We're not going to discontinue that. We're going to continue to, to do that. I think it's funded at about $89,000. There is another item. And the other item is that there's an update of the downtown design manual. It's estimated at $60,000. To me, that's a legitimate, it's legitimate to, to be paid out of the economic development authority. Of course, we need to talk to that, that council to make sure that they're comfortable with that. But that is really a part of what the economic development authority deals with in looking at, you know, a downtown design manual part to it. And then what I've already mentioned a couple of times before is that we can reduce that HRA levy, that 39,000, which would drop it down. So if, if city council were to entertain and accept those four changes, it would drop that 9.88 to 7.12% levy increase. And then I was done. And so I'll certainly take any questions on the budget. And then we're going to have our fire chief, Jason Mallinger, take us through his budget for the fire and code enforcement. And if time permits, I'll take the city council administration elections and the finance department's budget. Any questions, first of all?
Can you explain how the penalties work for residents? So i- if, if a resident's late on their bill, there's many, there's water, there's electric, there's, so does only a portion go to the electric penalty? Does the entire penalty go to the electric? How is that penalty assessed?
It's assessed to all of the enterprise. So it, yes, it's hitting water, wastewater, solid waste, everything. I just chose the electric for this. Good question. We definitely could take a look at the other ones. Reason why I didn't do that is because with our street projects, it hits three of our enterprise funds that I can tell you are, are, are going to be hurting. And, and if you remember earlier in the year, we've got high rates. So to me, it's like, I don't want to increase any of our utility rates. I can't avoid it in the, the surface water because of surface water, we have such a, it's, it's a small, small revenue source.
So, so if you pay a $40 penalty, it's amortized by the other bill, so 5% of that penalty might go to the electric?
Yeah, it's distributed based upon what's delinquent, you know.
Thank you. Question, if, if we didn't, that $249,000, if we didn't do that, what would happen with that money if we didn't bring it into the general fund? Would it go towards any kind of relief for electric or would it, or would it be if it wasn't brought this way?
If it, if, if we didn't transfer that, that transfer part to?
What would that look like on the electric side? Does that go towards rates? Does that, how does that work?
Again, even going back to Eller and Associates study on the rate, it never included, you know, investment income, it never included penalties. Part of the reason is because you may not get any. And that's part of the reason why I did the calculation based upon 2023 actuals and then looking at where, where we are today. City council can make the decision and say, yeah, let's leave it in that fund. The fund has a very high fund balance. You certainly could look at reducing rates if you would, you know, so desire. But you would need to, if you're going to reduce a rate, you need to make sure you're going to reduce a rate that can be stable even in the times where energy costs are going up. So we're not going to be caught into all of a sudden doing a double increase somewhere else down the road. And, you know, I, I know there was resistance last year when city council made the decision to transfer the $1.1 million to help start the street maintenance program and the preventative maintenance component to it. But you can look around at other cities our size, even smaller, you know, they'll have a liquor store. That liquor store is transferring money into their general fund like you can't believe. And that's part of how they hold their, their, you know, their tax rates lower and, and try to ease that impact on the, on the residents. It's just that we don't have that other component that we're doing. And that's where council member Norby has brought up on a number of occasions and I believe the referent, the moratorium ends in 2025 for sales tax. That's an option that we can look at. I think it brought up one time before. You know, maybe it's, maybe we need to push pressure on, on our current, our legislators that are around here and ask them, is there a way that they can change the state statute for operation of a liquor store? Right now, the statute reads they have to have a population of 10,000 or less. If you got in and opened up a liquor store, even if you're 50,000, you still get to run one. But it's an option. If we were to raise that based upon the 2022 populations, if we were to raise that from 10,000 to 15,000, it would impact 28 cities. Maybe that's an, that's an option. I think, I think we've, we would have an excellent case for that in light of that's legislation passed the cannabis, where it opened up that, any municipality, regardless of their size, could run a, you know, a cannabis store. And that there, that's an option, too. At the end of the day, we do need to come up with some other revenue sources outside of property taxes and intergovernmental. And that's-
Thanks for saying both. I just wanted to be clear because it does make sense, but you know, where it's coming from and it wouldn't go directly back to the, because of the, how it ebbs and flows. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
So any other questions? Yes? I see one.
Sorry, in terms of, you know, revenue sources, do you, do you yourself have any ideas of what would be helpful for us to consider at this time?
Honestly, I don't have the connections, but to me, I would push it for a liquor store. I honestly would. And, you know, I, and then I would, second would be, I would look at sales tax. And, and I think a sales tax, I think I had, can't remember what year the, um, um, uh, total sales were because the Department of Revenue publishes the thing, I think at a half a percent, I think it amounted to, I remember I'd shared that with you, I think it was, can't remember, it was like 410,000, maybe 500, 400,000 or something like that?
Just under 500,000.
Under 500,000, yeah. Other questions? If none, then we'll move on to our great fire chief.
No questions here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jason. Thank you for coming.
Hi, Mayor.
He's got a better looking PowerPoint than I do. I'm kind of jealous.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Let me get this. There we go. Perfect. We'll get started. So I promised to keep it under three hours. It's a joke, sorry. All right. I just wanted to get started and do a, a quick review of the fire department. And I know over the past few years, we've spent some time getting us back to where we needed to be and adding, and for this year, beginning of this year, our full-time firefighter code compliance officer. So just a quick review of our full-time staff, where we're at. This is our, our daytime, Monday through Friday team. Our captain, fire inspectors dealing with rental licensing, fire certificate of compliance for our commercial fire inspections. This year, they started doing fire sprinkler and fire alarm system plan review. So they are taking that submittals and approving them and then doing the inspections. So for instance, the Article 7 building, the sprinkler system and alarm system. We're obviously working very closely with our building official on that project as they do on many projects. They are usually a couple of times a, a week communicating with each other on various projects, but doing the inspections out there. And then obviously, the revenue from those plan reviews are coming directly to us as well. And obviously, fire and EMS response with the addition of the firefighter code compliance officer conducting code compliance, code compliance and fire and EMS response. And I just want to say again, I know over the past couple of years, we've been able to grow and get to this. And this year has been really exciting. I've seen a lot of work done by this small team. We definitely always have work to do. There's never really a breathing room for us still, but they have their pulse on projects, property owners. And if there's ever a problem that comes up, whether it's from a residence or internally, our team and people are, are able to get ahold of the property owners and deal with those issues immediately. So I'm really proud of what they're doing. So I'm going to move on from that. I wanted to focus tonight more on our part-time, our paid-on-call staff and what that is about. I don't think we, I have spent enough time in the past reviewing that. Currently, we have 32 members. We can have up to 40 members on the department. We're doing our, our, our hiring push right now on social media and other ways. And next Tuesday night, we'll be working and night out in our open house as well. But these are our, our, our pay rates for our paid-on-call staff members. And they start out as a probationary and as they move and get through their training and other requirements, they can move up into an officer or an assistant chief type I'm going to go through how I estimate our part-time paid-on-call salary component. And it's, it's really an estimate that I truly trying to put together because as paid-on-call staff, we're, we're trying to determine how many people are going to respond when the pager goes off. And that's, can be a difficult thing. So taking out away the full-time coverage that we have Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30 PM. The evening coverage here that I have is for our fire and EMS standby. So I have two responders on duty on the, on the evenings and, and weekends. So this is showing those hours and what it looks like yearly. One of those positions is a duty officer and another position is a first responder, usually a firefighter. And that duty officer is dual, as in responding as a first responder, but then also making decisions at that officer level. So it could be a lieutenant, it could be a captain, it could be assistant chief, or sometimes it's even myself. Again, just going through the weekend coverage. So I know we have, what we have here is one day, that's a 24-hour coverage, and then another day, that's 16 hours. And I'll, I'll, I'll show you why in, in a minute here. But our, our EMS duty shift rate from home, again, I should have backed up and said when our two people go on duty, they come in, they run through a checklist of a response vehicle, one of the squads, and basically check it out, make sure their equipment's good and ready to go for that shift. And then basically they go home and wait for the call to come in. And while they're there, that's what they're getting paid, that's $7.62 an hour. So the other portion that I talked about, the eight hours on the weekend that was missing, one time on the weekend, we do what's called an initial duty coverage or initial duty shift at the station. And maximum of three personnel on this crew and typically what they are doing, they're doing many different things. I assign them training to conduct throughout their, their daytime to get completed. They're responding to calls, obviously. They're assisting with any community events that may be happening on the, on that weekend if there are any. And that's why I have the flexibility of, of changing it to Saturday or Sunday. But again, maximum of three personnel. And what they can do, and we're seeing this more and more within the fire service. So while they're on duty shift as well, if, if let's say it's an EMS call, they're obviously responding directly to that call and handling it. But also if there were a motor vehicle accident, instead of toning out the entire department at that time, these three personnel can handle the call. So I'm not toning out additional staff unless needed. Now, if a structure fire comes in, our tones are set up differently that potentially these three. And we've had this happen- And we've had this happen before, where we have qualified, I'm sorry, where we have a qualified personnel on the truck, where it's an engineer, it's an officer and a firefighter, even on confirmed structure fire, they're rolling out of the station immediately, and we're backfilling with our paid-on-call, additional paid-on-call staff that arrive into the station and getting on the next truck and going out. Another component that I just talked about, and this is again, part of the difficult thing, is our fire call, our, what we call our station all calls. So when we get toned out for those structure fires, or there's larger type of calls where it's not a EMS call, it's not something that the initial duty shift can handle, it's a larger incident that requires more bodies. So at this point, I'm averaging, I'm saying we're averaging about three hundred and twenty-five of those annually, and we're seeing about twelve firefighters on an average response, and at, again, the average rate of eighteen fifty to give us that number as well. On our EMS calls, even though our calls are about fourteen hundred and twenty-five a year, I reduce the calls covered by full-time staff, Monday through Friday. Those are the majority of our calls, as I've reviewed our statistics, are the daytime, basically from eight AM to five PM, the majority of the calls that do come in for us. So removing that from the part-time salary estimate, thus reducing it basically down to six hundred and twenty-five calls. And then again, two firefighters that are responding at an average rate of eighteen fifty to give us that number. Training component, training is a huge thing of what we do. We are constantly working and training to keep our skills up and to become better, obviously. We do a lot of training EMS with Regions, who's, provides our medical direction, and Lakeview Ambulance, to basically hone in our teamwork and our skills together. Average hours per year of a hundred and five, average even though it's at twenty-five. Minimum, I should say, the minimum requirement that a firefighter needs to meet a year is seventy-two hours, but we provide additional training just because all of our people are part-time staff, they're not always going to be able to make every training that we had. So if we only kept it at seventy-two hours, we're going to be missing things. So we don't have the luxury of having our people here full-time where they're doing training on shift, but it works out. So these are the, all the items together, which gives me my total estimate of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is where I then go to Dan and say, hey, Dan, this is where we're at, and this is my guess, and you can see within our 2025 proposed part-time employee budget for, is at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And again, it's an estimate. We've been doing pretty good in the past, where we haven't shorted ourself on things, but as you'll see, calls are increasing. But I do like to note that we're operating, obviously, as a part-time paid-on-call department, and doing things very costly effectively with our response model. We are one of three departments in the metro area that are part-time paid-on-call. Most other surrounding departments have either gone to part-time staffing, that's twenty-four-seven, or full-time staffing, that's twenty-four-seven. I'm not suggesting we need to do that, I'm just merely pointing out our response model and that we are doing good, we really are. And we have a great group of people that are, are committed and are, are doing a lot of good work. Call volume, so over the last five years, you can see in 2019, thirteen hundred and fifty-five, 2020, fourteen seventy-eight, and just creeping up each year. Whereas 2023 was our highest call volume, again, at sixteen hundred and ninety-four calls total. As of yesterday, we were at a thousand and seven calls as compared to nine hundred and fifty from a year ago. So we're already fifty-seven over, noting that we hit a thousand calls this past weekend, which is the earliest that we've ever done that. So I've often wondered myself when things are going to plateau, but they are not. They are ever holding steady and slowly increasing as well. Average response time, so we can get into what our team is doing and what you're seeing for what you're paying them. So in 2023, our EMS call response for our duty officer and our EMS first responders, so our average response time, again, this is from the time of dispatch to arrival on scene, four minutes and twenty-four seconds for our duty officer or EMS first responder. As it relates to building fires or structure-type fires, our chief officers, five minutes and twelve seconds. I put an asterisk in there because that does include auto aid, where we have responded to either surrounding communities around us when they have requested it for us. So not, that's not just North St. Paul, I wasn't able to pull that out without spending a little bit more time, but I still think that's a, a great number. And then the first engine out to arrival, seven minutes and, and fifty seconds. And I think when I was talking to Brian and Dan in our meeting, noting that the national standard is eight minutes for full-time departments and ten minutes for part-time paid-on-call departments. So our team is doing a great job. Lakeview, we respond, you know, first respond for them as our medic provider, and these are some of their numbers that they have shared with me as well. Again, this is dispatched to arrived on scene. And it should be noted too, that obviously, we have different response locations for Lakeview because they're not just here in the station, even though we have a base for them. Besides the, the truck that is based in North St. Paul, it is also going out of our station and responding to different communities as well. It's going in the Maplewood, it's going in the Shoreview and Badness Heights and Lake Elmo. And then they backfill a truck. So typically, they have five trucks in rotation, two of them are in Hudson, two of them are in Stillwater, one of them's in North St. Paul. And depending on where the calls are, is how they move them around to have their better response time. So you can see from the North St. Paul base, four minutes and ten seconds. Highway thirty-six and Lake Elmo, there's a church parking lot there where they hang out, and the response time there is seven minutes and fifteen seconds. Stillwater base, which is basically the old Denny Hecker building, that's where they're based out of now, nine minutes and twenty seconds. Another location for them, Highway thirty-six and Highway ninety-five. And then other, and those could just be in between bases or returning from a hospital, wherever they could be on the road, and that average of ten minutes and twenty-eight seconds. So their total responses and their times there. We've also, because Lakeview's been unable to respond because they've been out of trucks, which isn't a whole lot of times, we've had Maplewood Fire respond as well, and you can see that average of seven minutes and five seconds to respond. Even though some of these numbers from further away are, you know, ten minutes out, that's a long time, we, what the EMS world is in the metro area and outstate kind of dealing with right now, these are excellent numbers. There are departments and areas, even in the metro area, that are seeing twenty-minute change or twenty minutes response times from an ambulance service. Some departments have taken it on themselves to have paramedics on staff just to deal with some of these issues that they're having. So even though some of the longer times are there, we still have a great product with, with Lakeview. What do you get with our duty officer and EMS first responder? Again, just highlighting some of the things that they do, both respond to every call during their shift, fire and EMS. The duty officer always goes to the scene, is in charge and makes decisions. That first responder may be coming to the station to get on the truck. As it relates to lift assists with no injuries, it's predominantly done across the board throughout the fire, all fire departments, that there's no EMS response, if you will, no medic response. Because if we send that, or if they send that ambulance, it's basically taking them out of service for an actual emergency. So what happens, our, our staff respond, and they determine if it is just somebody that needs a lift up off the floor, and if it's real minor, and if they, or if they need Lakeview to respond, and they'll evaluate the patient. If something further is needed, they'll ask Lakeview to respond. Obviously, they're conducting patient care, obtaining chief complaints, vitals, medications, medical history, allergies. We work directly with Lakeview to help set up IV, blood glucose monitoring, et cetera, twelve lead EKG, carrying patients out, that's a big thing a lot of times with just having a couple extra on hands. Hands on scene means we don't have to tone out the rest of the department to handle those types of calls. We assist with BLS in the ambulance on severe calls en route to the hospital. That means they could be in the, in the back assisting the medics, and they can be driving the ambulance as well to the hospital. I guess we handle the calls with Lakeview, and we try to limit the need for station all calls and, and handle it with the first responders. They determine when multiple EMS calls or fire calls come in, because it is quite common for us to get one call and two call and three call within an hour period of time, and we're sending, excuse me, we're sending people, one responder at a time, and then a backup ambulance coming from a different location. So again, they're handling multiple calls within a short period of time. Additionally, making sure, most importantly, we have somebody first responding that's getting on scene, but then also limiting the fact of toning out the entire department to respond at a later time to the incident. We start BLS care on cardiac arrest and respiratory arrests prior to the arrival of the Rescue Five Forty crew that would be arriving on scene. And the duty officer becomes incident command on station all call. The duty officer was something that we implemented a few years ago, and when we first started it, our lieutenants and captains, even though they have gone through the incident command training, you need that field training, if you will, to hone in your skills. And it's really been a good thing for me to see how our staff have grown over the last year because of this and what they're doing. So I'm really happy for that. So those types of all calls are structure fires, motor vehicle accidents, hazmats, fire alarms, the MCI, the shooting-type incidents, and other violent incidents, and et cetera. Last is just our type, our, our incident types, if you will, and this is coming out of the state fire marshals program that we use for free that categorizes our types of calls. So category one are our fire-type calls, as you can see, building fires, twenty-two, even though that's going to include auto aid to our neighboring communities, and it could be something, a fire that's minor, to something that's a fire that's a major structure fire as well. Explosions, it's a category, we only had one in 2023. Again, EMS, the majority of what we do, as you can see, EMS calls excluding accident with injury, but then also adding in there motor vehicle accident with injuries at twenty-seven, motor vehicle accidents with no injuries at eight, totaling up that EMS category. Hazardous conditions, typically, a lot of these hazardous conditions are going to be chemical leaks or spills or hazards that may not, or have not caused any type of, of fire, but nonetheless are a hazardous condition. Our power line downs, arcing and shorting could be the building structure collapsed or weakened, and a general cleanup of vehicle accidents. Service-type calls, key box, smoke or odor removal, the majority of those are public service assists, so whether it's someone's called nine-one-one, and for instance, today, we had a public service assist at a local apartment building where a resident dropped her phone down the elevator shaft. And the apartment complex called us out there because it was going to cost them five hundred and fifty dollars just to get a contractor out to open up the, the shaft and go in there. So we're trained to do that. Our staff was able to work with the management team over there, open it up, shut things down, get in there, get her phone out from the bottom of the location of where things were at. So everybody was happy, especially the, the property owner and the resident that, that got her phone back. I don't know how she dropped it down that little opening, but nonetheless, it happened. But that's, could be an example of a public service assist. Good intent-type call, so a lot of times people call, and then we either get dispatched and canceled en route. Some, some of those would be related to EMS calls as well. Could be a smoke scare or an odor of smoke, and not really, once, once we get there, not finding anything as far as a fire. False alarm, false calls, obviously having buildings and homes that have detectors to let us know of issues, a lot of times we can get false alarms, and we respond to deal with those issues as well. Flood assessment, one, natural disaster, and one more special incident type citizen complaint. That's our part-time paid-on-call, our response. Have any questions?
Where would delivering a baby be in there?
Yeah, it, unfortunately, it falls right in the EMS portion, and you probably heard of, of that happening a few months ago. That was a amazing event for our firefighters that got there and delivered a baby, very proud moment. Again, we train for this stuff all the time, but sometimes those things don't happen. I think they were really surprised when they walked in the room and it was happening. It's go time.
Jason, thank you so much for all you do.
Jason, thank you so much for all you do. I can't thank you enough. So appreciate you and your staff, everything you do. My question's a little bit technical, so bear with me, and maybe this is a Dan and Brian. I got concerned on like page two and three with the 762 rate, because that fell below minimum wage. Can you explain that, or is that legal?
Yeah, so I'll give you my answer, and then I'll let Dan talk about it as well, because I'm sure he has a wealth of a lot more knowledge than I do. So this is a standby rate at home. So what happens is, this is what we get them to commit to standing by at home, and not a lot of, actually, we're one of very few departments that have this response model. And it's, a lot of departments, you know, go to the next step of staffing and station. But to be honest, when I have talked about this with our staff, they like the opportunity of being able to be at home and then respond in the vehicle. But what this is, it's more or less a standby rate. There are nights where we have multiple calls, and if there is a call, they're getting paid their hourly rate on top of the standby rate. So if they're a firefighter, they're getting that firefighter rate of 17, I'm sorry, whatever that was, on top of the standby rate as well. If there are no calls, they're just getting the standby rate for that entire shift.
He's very good, isn't he? Technically, they're not working, working, which allows you to be below the minimum wage. So it's an on-call rate.
More of like a per diem than a wage?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, I appreciate it, just wanted, it struck me as.
I'll go. Question around fire assists on EMT calls. Is that standard practice amongst communities? Is that something that we're, we hang our hat on and we're proud of in North St. Paul?
I, most departments, again, our EMS calls range from 70% to 80%, as most fire departments as well. We're seeing more and more departments around us that do first respond to medicals, primarily because of the issue of lack of enough EMS or ambulance out there to be able to respond, or just in the scenario, like I had mentioned earlier, a lot of times, two people are not enough to carry a patient out of the house. Sometimes they just need two more hands. So what we're seeing with surrounding communities around us that have a, let's say, an engine company that's also staffed, they're sending an engine company along with an ambulance to first respond. And additionally, when their ambulances are all busy transporting, and Lakeview or other ambulances are going into the community to help them, they're sending that engine company as well to first respond. We definitely, I, for me, you're right, I hang my hat on our response times of our first responders, that they're able to get there quickly, and when they, when we arrive on scene, just have that person kind of look at you and tell the person on the phone, hey, they're here, and you can see the relief in their eyes just knowing that somebody is there and we're about to take over. But response times, for me, are number one. That's the biggest item that I want to see from our staff, along with, obviously, skilled and trained workers.
And again, part of the only reason I ask is, it's that time of year, we look to rub every nickel together, and I did see in the PowerPoint, there was a number up there of part-time, of what, $31,000, I think, of staffing these EMS calls that happen during non-business hours. And then, was it 800 calls, I think, that was up in that presentation of what was called on during business hours? So again, I look at how much of that is necessary versus nice to have.
Yeah.
And yeah, you're going to throw any life that's saved is, you know, and I recognize that, so I'm not discounting that at all. And same with during the, I call business hours. What does that do to the workload of the four full-time employees? When they go out on calls, does that put a strain on getting their day-to-day stuff done?
Yeah. So during the daytime, with the four of us in here, typically, I have one staff that's assigned to responding to EMS calls. And the thing about us during the daytime is we can monitor, I don't know if you'd be able to see it, but, see if I can, nope, I can't. Anyway, our CAD, and I'm able to monitor the calls that are coming in, so we know right away the type of call it is. So they're based Alpha Bravo as a minor call, or Charlie Delta as a more serious type call, or an Echo if it's extremely serious. So a lot of times, what we'll do, especially if, when we're all in the office working, if an EMS call comes in, I'm usually the first one that's like, hey, we got an EMS call coming in, it's this, and only one of you, you know, need to go. So we definitely focus on making sure that we're not having two or three respond to a medical when it's not needed or necessary, but always having one that goes. If there is a need, then we do that. We'll send the second person. And obviously, when they're more serious, whether, whatever they are, then we're all going along with the rest. But that's how we monitor it during the daytime, to make sure it's fair. And then also, if one of our staff members has something going on, we make sure that somebody is going, that may have an opportunity to break away from what they're doing. A lot of times as well, when they're out in the field, whether it's doing the code compliance and out in the neighborhood, a lot of the times, these calls will pop up as well, so they're out in the area. I believe that was one of the questions. Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you. Again, because as you talked about, I think, calls year-to-date are up above 5% or 6% for the 57 against last year's number.
Yeah.
And just kind of taking, taking a look at that, I'm assuming a lot of those are the EMS calls. So as we look at the continued increase, I see the, you know, I see an increasing demand on fire department going to EMS calls.
Yes.
So that was why I was curious as to the cost and the business hour job time and et cetera.
Yes. Good question, yes.
Also, when you said tone out, so it sounds like you just do a certain percent. So is that something that you've been doing over the years, or was it mostly an all-call before, and you're kind of tweaking that to make sure we get the right number of people for the right situation?
Yes. So again, this goes back to 2007. Prior to that time, what we would do for our medical calls that were more serious, we would tone out the entire department. And then when the highway project was split, we started to do a first responder program on the north side and south side of the town to cover calls. And we saw good results with it, and that's kind of why we've stuck with it since then. Along with that, so obviously, when we have people that have a vehicle that can go directly to the scene, they're not having to drive their vehicle to the station, get here, wait for additional staff to get here, get their equipment on, and staff a truck, and then roll out to the scene, which takes a little bit longer. So that was the inception of the first responder program at the time, how it began. And again, the reason why we continue it is twofold. Response times, but then also trying to be able to handle those calls and not tone out the entire department, and having, whether it's a dozen people, or 15 people, or 20 people come here and pay them all, instead of utilizing two people to handle that call.
Makes sense. And I'm assuming when you dispatch, like, you know, you take off and the other ones, and it's, you evaluate and say, oh, don't call everybody, we got this, or, you know, send everybody, that type of thing, so you're like the bird dog, to get out there and do that decision to get there as quick as possible.
Yeah, so the, our dispatchers from Ramsey County, obviously, dispatch us, and a lot of the times, we can be given information on what that call is, but it can change once you're on scene. It can be different. It could be because the information wasn't accurate, or a distraught person calling 911. But ultimately, again, having the duty officer on to, again, look and see where our ambulance is coming from and who it is, to make that determination and make those decisions on scene, if any additional help is needed or not.
Anything else?
Thank you. And if you ever have questions later on, you know how to reach me.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the questions here, because, you know, that's something with us too, and it's going to be every, every department we have, just to get a better understanding, just like with Tim, just asking those questions, where, walk us through that. So it's, we have to learn on our side, we want to make sure budget-wise that we're gathering information, sometimes we challenge.
Yeah.
And that's good for all of us.
I agree, not at all. There's no bad questions, and I'm here to answer them, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right, we let him off the hook. So I'm going to take four budgets, city council, administration, elections, and finance. These four departments make up 11% of the general fund. Four make up 11%. Pretty good. City council.
Dan, can I have, let's just take five for a minute, will you? Before we jump into this.
Can we give a five-minute break?
Oh, for sure.
We've got two hours.
Yep, for sure. We got two more hours to go. I'll have you, I'll have you done in 15.
Take a couple then?
Yep.
Five minutes, please?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's do it. 15 minutes, go.
15 minutes? I appreciate the five-minute break.
Thank you. City council. City council budgets, pretty much the same as it has in the past. Personnel costs didn't change much. Personnel costs have to, for them to change, they don't go off of a cost of living, there actually has to be an ordinance, and it has to be passed, and then it goes into the subsequent year, which has not been done. Supplies stay the same. Contractual services actually decreased approximately $5,800 or 7%. So overall, the city council budget saw a reduction of $6,000 or a 5% reduction from 2024. All right. The administration budget, little bit different story in the administration budget. Personnel costs went up by 16%. Part of it is, there's the cost of living, but the bigger part to it is, is that we changed from a part-time employee to a full-time employee this year in the communications person, so that attributed to a bigger increase in this department. If you look at supplies, supplies virtually stayed the same, and then there was a 3% increase in contractual services of $7,500. So this budget's seeing approximately a $50,000 increase or a 9%. And again, the bigger driving factor of that, 80% of it is salaries. That's increasing. What is an electronic documentation tech?
That is, we have an employee who does a lot of scanning for documents, putting them into laser fish. Yeah. And so we have a part-time employee who does that, yeah. Does an excellent job. And then elections, elections, you know, basically, we're just paying for.